And that's what this deals with. I know there is also the effort that we're doing that's related to affordable housing in general. And when that comes along, if there's any tweaks that need to be made here to this particular code, those will happen at that time. So I won't go into specifics. I think I'd rather open it up for questions from the board. That's basically it. It does just a quick overview.
Any questions from the board? Mary?
Yes.
Microphone, Mary.
Could you put up the map again? Thank you. Sorry. Can you put that map up again? Okay. So in the original maps that you brought in the 2017-18 timeframe, there weren't really flex units on. Is that correct?
Say that question again. I'm sorry.
And the original flex zones that came to planning and zoning?
These, the original ones?
In 2017-18.
Right.
There were not flex units on the barrier island, correct?
There were. This, so we went from the 18 different zones.
Right.
Had flex units in each zone.
Okay.
Collapsed them into what you see in the red.
I see that. I see that's the final, final that passed the city commission, but not necessarily what was. The reason I'm asking is because you, there was a decision not to develop further on the barrier island. And tonight I see, I knew that at the last minute, the city commission added, I believe, the 17th Street section and the Oakland Park section, but I see one up on, it looks like Commercial Boulevard as well. Is that correct?
No. So there's, there's the 17th Street, which is.
Oh, yeah.
17th Street is here. This is the Galleria Mall area, so there.
Yeah.
This is Oakland Park.
Right. Okay. And it's not on commercial. It's stopped.
Right, right.
Okay. All right. And that's not really part of what you're discussing.
Well, no, this is the adopted flex policy. Those areas east of the Intracoastal, which are the two nodes basically that we're talking about right now, can get flex units, but there is also a further restriction that they can't get the 50 dwelling units per acre. They can only be 25 dwelling units per acre. So there's an additional density limitation on the barrier island.
Okay. And that's not, but that's not part of what's changing.
No, that remains. That's part, that's in our comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board questions before we open up? Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Do we have any motions to approve?
I mean, I think, I just, I'll have a question for staff. Jim, just why, for the benefit of the people who are here, you want to just outline the main, the primary changes?
Yep. So I'll put this slide back up on the screen. The primary changes occur in 4723, which is the applicability, basically. The majority of the language is the same. It was bringing it up into compliance or consistency, or provide consistency with our flex policy. There was some old outdated language related to how the allocation of units were applied. And also in relation to affordable housing, it really didn't outline a process for doing that throughout the city. So we added that as well. The determination of availability, that was in our code already, where an applicant has to verify with city staff that the units or commercial acreage, flex acreage is available to allocate on the property before they even submit an application to the city. So that provided clarity there. Some of the issues that came up when we unified the, unified the flex policy was the regional activity centers. That particular land use designation was not clear in the flex on how to allocate. So that's why you see a new line item about regional activity centers or RACs and adopted master plan areas. Because for instance, the uptown area does not have a regional activity center land use, but it does have a city commission adopted master plan. So that needed clarity as well in how we apply flex in that region. The rest of the language was pretty much in the, in the existing code. The difference, the very last item, social service residential facilities, needed some clarification on how that got allocated. Because those are calculated at a different density. They're not calculated at one to one. They're calculated at .5 to one because of the social service aspect. So it was all that pretty much wrapped into the proposed amendment.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm going to move that we approve. And I just want to say that staff, you did a great job of adding all these additional clarifications. Because there was a lot of confusion before, and this will hopefully clear it up.
Thank you.
Okay. So Jay Scheckman's, is there a second to the motion? Was that Sherry? Okay. Okay. Go ahead, Bridget. Let's call the roll.
Mr. Barongo?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Ms. Furtick? Chair Scott?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Great. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to case number three. Case number S20009. Request for site plan approval. Bayshore Concepts LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, do you would do disclosures at this time?
Yes. We have disclosures from the board?
This is Jay Scheckman. I spoke with the applicant council.
Mike Waymoth. I spoke with applicant's counsel.
Steve Gannon, site visit.
Courtney, I spoke.
John Barongo. I spoke with applicant's council and did a site visit.
Can I turn your mic? Do I have to disclose that I spoke? I did.
And Jaclyn Scott. I spoke to the applicant's council and did a site visit. Okay. Courtney?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members. Courtney Crush on behalf of the property owner. With me this evening is Rishi Kapoor, who is the developer for Ola Kino House. Also with me is Per Sanda, who's partnered with Rishi on this endeavor. I think many of you are familiar with Per and the North Beach Village renovations and enhancements in that area of the beach. George Garcia, principal with Garcia Stromberg, our architect, and Vivian Banay with, also with Rishi Kapoor's company. And Gage Couch, our landscape architect, all of whom are available to answer any questions that you may have following the presentation or in the middle of the presentation. Madam Chair, I know you asked me to be relatively succinct. I'm going to turn it over to Rishi just for a minute or two of introduction and then take the board through the, the proposal. and then take the board through the proposal. Thank you.
15 minutes is good, Courtney?
Yes, Jackie, it is. And I may reserve if there are, can I reserve about three to five minutes of, thank you.
Madam Chair and the board, thank you so much for having us tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. Just to be very succinct, we are embarking on what we think is one of the most special projects coming to North Beach Village and the overall Fort Lauderdale beach, but Fort Lauderdale community in bringing what is an extension of our brand as a luxury wellness condominium, first of its kind in the area focused on both unit wellness, the impact on the environment, as well as the impact throughout the common areas of the building. And for us, I just want to take you upon the journey that we've been forward, been on since the beginning of embarking on this project. Number one, it was to elevate the design level and bring something very unique and special to Fort Lauderdale beach. And number two, it was to be a great neighbor. And I've personally attended every neighborhood association meeting over the last approximately, I guess at this point, it's been eight to nine months. We've done one-on-ones, we've done Zooms, we've done in-persons. And what I've done with every project we've ever embarked on is listen. And what I hope that you will hear tonight is a variety of discussion that we listened extensively for hours upon hours about neighbor feedback, took considerations into the design, world-class design of the project. And we even made concessions proactively before coming here tonight. So even though there's many aspects of the project that are quote unquote, "as of right", or that we feel would have been a benefit for the neighborhood, we've listened and evolved our business plan based on some of the comments of the neighbors. So I hope that you will keep an open mind as you hear the various discussion tonight and realize that we've tried to do our part in being a phenomenal neighbor, not just in bringing in a world-class project, but also being a great member of the community. So I appreciate you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rishi. The property upon which Ola Kino House is proposed is located on four parcels of land on the west side of Bay Shore Drive, on the intracoastal, in the North Beach residential area, as defined in the accessory, it's in the city's IOA intracoastal overlooked zoning district. The property, as you can see, is very long and slightly triangular on itself. And it fronts on Bay Shore Drive, which today is rather barren. The vision for Rishi, as he related to the creative mind of George, was really to create something special, to take a look at the city's desires in terms of having extraordinary architecture with high-quality materials, movement and design. And really, the goal was twofold, not only to just have proposed residences, which when you're inside them are enjoyable, but also to take this as an opportunity to start to complete the city streetscape. We've seen a lot of the Central Beach streetscape plans, which look to shade trees and wide sidewalks. Well, given the 300 and 400 feet that we have available here, that was also very important. Further, to do what I think a lot of buildings try to do and maybe don't have the luxury of having the linear footage, is to, if you're going to create a walkable streetscape, to really propose buildings in a fashion that they engage with the street. So the concept that George and his partner Peter Strongberg worked with was, you know, what is, what is Rishi's desire in terms of, as he said, elegant, environmentally sensitive, elegant living? And how can we create a space where not only the residents of Ola Kino House live well, but also the neighbors in North Beach also enjoy walking by Ola Kino House? As Rishi touched upon, we have done a significant amount of outreach and listening. We first presented to the Central Beach Alliance Board last November and then met with our neighbors in Sunrise Intercoastal across the waterway. And of course, our immediate neighbors, Panama Club, the Bay Shore Embassy, which is across Bay Shore Drive from us, and also Bay Shore Towers, which is our neighbor to the south. Proposed up on the screen is Ola Kino House. It is proposed, as I mentioned, as 65 residential dwelling units. It is intended to find a very nice balance between indoor and outdoor space. And you can see from this perspective, the movement and orientation of the towers and also a very low parking podium. This is the rendering, obviously, of Ola Kino House from Bay Shore Drive. We're here before this board tonight to ask for a site plan approval for residential dwelling units, which is permitted, subject to this board's recommendation ultimately. Also, we are asking for application of a prior zoning district of regulation. So the design that we're going to take you through, which we think is superior, results from a 2000 code change, a year 2000 code change, where structures, including garages, were included in a maximum dimension of 200 feet. As I'll take you through, the effect on a property such as this would be to dictate that two parking garages exist on this site in order for the two residential buildings to exist. That produces a taller parking podium, taller parking podiums, actually, and also adds vehicular conflict points. One thing I do want to touch upon early on, which is not in your application, but was up until several weeks ago on the theme of good listening. Our neighbors to the south, as you can see, sort of the footprint on the aerial at Bay Shore Towers, had very strong reactions to an accessory cafe that was proposed. Rishi was envisioning a modest-sized dining opportunity and expected that our neighbors, both north and south of us, but also, you know, a block or two away, would enjoy strolling over. That was something that we spoke with Bay Shore Towers, and their council is here this evening. And ultimately, while Rishi believed it was, again, a very desirable use, we removed the restaurant from the application. What is going to be proposed would be a clubroom. There may be modest dining for some of the residents, you know, a box lunch or a muffin, as many condominiums use their, use their community rooms, won't have a commercial kitchen, won't have grease traps, and is going to be for Ola Kino House residents only. The site plan, as you can see laid out, does have the ground level. What is a little bit unique about Ola Kino House is the ground level actually has four villa units, two on the front and then two on the intercoastal. So as you'll see further as we walk through the streetscape, not only do we creating landscape trees and sidewalk, but also stepping up to ground-level units, masking two layers of parking, which is above. Here you really see the connection point on the garage. With the ability to seek the application of the prior zoning regulations, we're able to connect the point on the garage and not have another level and a half, which really does allow the mass to be respectfully minimized. The garage is only 30 feet in height, which for a typical beach project would be something rather different. It's going to walk you up the building in the footprint. You can see on the left, there are, the floor plans are laid out, but you can see this is a building with a lot of movement. It tapers back as it heads towards the intercoastal. The amenity deck provides, as I said, outdoor spaces, pool, et cetera. There are typically four units per floor. Everybody has a corner unit. And you start to appreciate, as we're going through the floor plans, you can still see at varying levels how the buildings form and shape varies significantly as you increase in height. Wanted to show you the basically colored landscape plan, so you can see again the footprint of the towers, the point of connection, the landscaping that is on the perimeter. And I think can also appreciate now, as you're looking down, both the onsite landscaping and you see offsite, we also have green areas, appropriate areas for parking. Wanted to share with you a perspective of our neighbor to the south, Bay Shore Towers, as I mentioned. Their pool deck sits on the north. Tower is set back a little further. Our low parking podium is set back 20 feet at the ground level. And then because this is triangular, the building steps from, you know, 40 to 70 feet at that location. Our neighbor to the south is the Panama Club Apartments. You start to see the creation of the streetscape. The resident entrance is at the north end of the property. And as you continue to walk further south, you'll see what I was referencing earlier, which is because of FEMA, stepping up to the ground-level villas, the introduction of the different materials, whether it is the wood or glass up above as you walk down the street, and the street trees, which again, hopefully start to create an environment where one will walk on Bay Shore Drive. This is the connection point. And George and his team, I think, did a very, both challenging and good job of making the lobby, which as you can see is clear glass, the connection point. There are no features that would block one's view if you were walking by, so you can actually see through to the waterway. Importantly, George also designed this to be below grade. As I shared with you, the building steps up to comply with FEMA regulations, but George was able, because this is non-habitable, to actually reduce this down to street level. So you're not feeling as if this is a barrier. You're at a level where you can visually engage with the, with the property at this location in addition to where the villas are. Then they've also recessed back what's behind sort of that art piece, which is the connection point on the two levels of the garage. Wanted to share with you just a close-up of the, some of the materials that are used, whether it is the perforated grill, the wood that I referenced earlier, and how, I think you can appreciate from this perspective, how the residential buildings are not, not only are they not rectilinear as you're looking at it from a bird's eye view, but there is also a tremendous amount of movement on each floor. This is a perspective, just sharing with you how we were able to recess the lobby. You can also see on the perimeter how, on the north and the south, the balconies and the building form actually undulate as it goes up in height. This is obviously the perspective that I shared with you from the waterway, equally elegant to our neighbors at Sunrise Intercoastal. As part of, as you know, every application, wastewater and water capacity are analyzed. Wastewater capacity is sufficient. Water capacity had a challenge. So Rishi is going to be upsizing a six-inch water pipe to a 10-inch for 400 linear feet adjacent to the property. Also, just wanted to share with you, our neighbors to the north at the Panama Club, their primary focus, their lower buildings, was construction management. And we've proffered to them, and the construction team here has had the contractor to commit to certain protocols, cleaning, et cetera. We believe we have designed a building that is consistent with the beach code in terms of its design criteria, ground level engagement, building form. We are well within the building envelope of the development of significant impact setbacks. As we, as we elevate, you are familiar, and you see in your staff report, they exist at 10 feet at the ground level, going to 20 from 30 to 75 feet, and then crease above. And we are well within those, those development of significant impact setbacks. We also believe that under the application to seek relief, or the application of the prior zoning regulation, we believe that having a structure, two structures that would be 200 feet does a disservice, not only to the property owner, and it is impactful, that that prior regulation allowed the design to be lower and more consistent with the neighborhood compatibility criteria applicable to the beach, which are essentially the beach design guidelines, which heavily emphasize both the public realm, the private realm, and appropriate scale and mass. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you, Jackie.
Ms. Furtick?
But I would tell you that, okay. So I'm looking at your chart of people that you met with. Did you, did, did you get, did any of those associations support you? For example, Central Beach Alliance, do you have a support?
We do not at this time. And the Central Beach Alliance Board is aware that we are presenting to the Planning and Zoning Board. What occurred was we were scheduled to return to the Central Beach Alliance membership. Central Beach Alliance Board leadership also participated in our public participation meeting, which was independent of that, and had heard some of the comments from our neighbor at Bay Shore Towers. So Bay Shore Towers Council asked that we defer our membership vote at CBA in May in order to meet with Bay Shore Towers, which we were able to do on June 17. At that time, the Central Beach Alliance indicated that they strongly encouraged us to work with our immediate neighbors, and they will, they will, I think they had hoped that it would have occurred. They will ultimately schedule a special Zoom meeting, even though they normally don't meet in the summer for this project. But the feedback from the Central Beach Alliance meetings was positive with respect to design. And a lot of the members also lived in Bay Shore Towers. So those were the comments that the CBA.
And Bay Shore Towers ultimately supported.
Bay Shore Towers Council is here. Bay Shore Towers, Mr. Shear, I think appreciates the removal of the restaurant, and I believe is going to indicate that with, now that it's a clubroom, that activity, I think he's going to indicate to the board what conditions he would like to see accompany the site.
All right. And, and then Bay Shore Embassy?
Bay Shore Embassy, Karen Turner was on her way.
Okay.
They, the feedback from Bay Shore Embassy had a lot to do with walkability design. One person wondering what was in it for him. They also know we are here this evening. I'm actually meeting with one of their board members, Karen Turner, on Friday. She indicated she was coming tonight. I said, "Do you want to do it?" Before PNC, she said, "No, we know where it is. It still has to go to the commission." Like, I can't speak beyond what we heard at the meeting.
And finally, Sunrise Intercoastal?
Sunrise Intercoastal did not take a vote. It was a membership Zoom. The concerns actually were that also on the restaurant, which, you know, Rishi was envisioning something like the pillars. Sunrise Intercoastal was envisioning shooters, and Bay Shore Towers, I think, was envisioning the elbow room. So when we removed the restaurant, I reached out to Sunrise Intercoastal's President Jim Concanon, sent him the updated plans showing that the restaurant had been removed. And he just told me that he would advise the two people that had a concern about loud boating activity. But I do not believe they took a vote.
Okay. And then you have a request for an application of prior zoning regulation?
Yes.
Just, I, I don't know whether the zoning changed in 97 or 2000, but obviously that was a time ago. Is it the same property owner own the property today as owned it?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I, I guess, and I'll just get to this when we discuss the project itself, but it just seems strange to ask for relief for something that's bought this land, knowing what zoning was. So I guess that's a point of discussion, but I kind of wanted to give you the.
Well, certainly. I don't think that the code, I think the code's emphasis with respect to that application for the prior zoning is, is the regulation. And I believe Ms. Furtick, it was done in, you know, with 1997 as the line, you know, line of demarcation. And, but the criteria is, is. And, but the criteria is, is what you are proposing to build or get approved consistent with the comprehensive plan? And certainly, given the fact that the Central Beach zoning encourages residential uses and then goes further to articulate building form, landscape enhancements, we are consistent with the zoning code and the comprehensive plan and the revitalization plan and everything that is encouraged. And that is actually what the ULDR asks you to look at in part. It also asks whether it, the regulation i- is a burden on the property owner. And in terms of design, as I alluded to earlier, it does burden the property owner. You basically have, in this case, a uniquely shaped property in terms of linear frontage. And to put the burden on a designer and therefore the property owner to build two garages and add, I'm going to call it back of house infrastructure and add layers of parking garage, is not something that would be typical on a smaller lot. The only time I've worked on a request for an application for prior zoning regulation was, and I'm mentioning it because Ms. Furtig, you were very actively involved, was for beach, beach walk-up behemoth. Was a similar A1A long piece of property. In addition, as when you look at burden and kind of juxtapose it with neighborhood compatibility, there is also a burden on the community and actually on the regulations that are set forth in the code. The code encourages you to have things that are appropriate en masse. The code encourages superior design, and I think that by being able to elevate two levels of parking and design residential at the ground floor, which I have not, I rarely seen anywhere in a typical beach building, still meeting the intent of the design guidelines by providing this, you know, wide lobby and vista is really a boon and therefore not allowing it would be, you know, a burden on the entire immediate neighbor.
Okay, so let me ask you a question because I, I'm not disagreeing with anything you just said. I'm just asking for that relief for prior zoning if you're in fact meeting all other elements.
It's the one regulation, there is a immense. Yes. I, I do believe as a footnote that there was, in addition, I believe there was discussion and perhaps a prior interpretation of the maximum structure length. And I'm going back before, before 2005 anyway. Didn't, wasn't always applied to garages, which may be why you see other buildings that have longer ones. But if you technically look at the definition of a structure, it would include a parking garage or anything else for that.
Okay, anyone else have any questions before we move forward? Okay.
I have one question, I don't know if it's for the applicant, maybe staff. Are there any other buildings that exist proper? I'm just thinking the W, just offhand, that obviously is longer than 200. Probably more like, does the same criteria apply? Courtney, can you answer that question?
Please. In the, in that zoning district, actually for the same principle, that's the ABA zoning district. And only in an east-west direction, under 55 feet in height, the code actually allows garages, because that's what it's intended for, to exceed the 200 feet. And the discussion when that code section came into place was for exactly that reason. If you limit it, you would end up with multiple garages and they would all be nine stories. So that, the W, not going to speak much more on the W, but that, that portion of the W is compliant with the zoning.
Yeah. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, before we talk about making the staff report part of the record, I think Mr. Hetzel has some changes to update.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Sure.
One of, this is why I should write things down. As I was mentioning regarding the, the removal of the restaurant, one of the things that we agreed to proffer to the board, which is consistent with the current ULDR, as restaurants are a site plan level four use in this zoning district, that there may not be an administrative amendment or a change of use to this site plan to try to introduce a restaurant. You know, whether it's generations from now or not, the proposal of any restaurant as a site plan level four would require DRC Planning and Zoning Board City Commission accompanied by public participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Evening again, Jim Hetzel, Principal Planner. Just one correction to the staff report on page six. Under comprehensive plan consistency, the very last paragraph makes a reference to the PM peak hour trips. That's not correct. It was a mistake. It should read as 31, not 43. That is also reflected in the table on the previous page where it says 31. So it was just a, an error on our part. So again, page six, the very last paragraph under comprehensive plan consistency should read 31, not 43 PM peak hour trips. Just wanted to make the correction.
Chair Assistant City Attorney Dwayne Spence. If I can add into the record as well that the code section in question was adopted via ordinance C00-26 and 2000 for the record.
Thank you, that's the new ordinance that Courtney was talking about.
That was the ordinance that added the length and width, maximum length and width of the structures to 200 feet.
That's what you're asking relief from? All right, does the board want to make the report part of the record?
Some of.
Okay, thank you. Let's open this up to anyone in the public that would like to speak. You, sir, you were sworn in, correct? Okay, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Board. Jeremy Shear with Becker &amp; Polly Koff. I represent Bay Shore Towers, which is the neighbor to the south. And as Courtney alluded to, the major concern is the restaurant. And if you'll allow me, I would like to read into the record some conditions of approval that thereafter you could, you could ask the applicant if they agree to. So first of all, you know, we do appreciate that the applicant has removed the restaurant and added the condition of approval that it cannot be an administrative site plan adjustment. That's a necessary but not sufficient change. As I indicated, you know, we are worried that it's a wolf in sheep's clothing. But, you know, we have seen that they are demonstrating some goodwill. So any use that would be considered a restaurant or an amenity open to the public would not be able to be approved as an administrative site plan adjustment. That would have to go through DRC Planning and Zoning and City Commission approval. We also request that the name be changed on the site plan from dining area to club room. We request that there not be any employees assigned to this amenity. We're obviously worried about cooks, waiters, managers, things of that sort. No commercial kitchen, no cooking or hot food, no guests allowed for the amenity, no restaurant supply delivery, no grease traps, no valet parking for the amenity, no deliveries such as Uber or Grubhub, no takeout, no alcohol sales to non-residents, no dockside access, no music live or of any kind. If there are found to be, you know, kitchen fumes or foul smells, any complaints must be resolved within 10 days. We request that the dumpster be placed internally into the building. No additional signage indicating this specific amenity. And if in violation of any of these conditions, applicant would have 30 days to cure the violations. And if not cured, then the amenity would be shut down, at least until a plan is in action in order to bring it back to compliance. So yeah, I mean, like I said, our main concerns are that, you know, this is not labeled as a restaurant, but that it would function as a restaurant. So hopefully all of those conditions would be agreed to by the applicant. And if so, then, you know, hopefully we would be in a better position. Thank you so much.
Assistant City Attorney Dwayne Spence. Unfortunately, it would not be agreed to by the city. There is Assistant City Attorney Dwayne Spence. Unfortunately, we cannot agree to those conditions on the city's behalf as part of conditions to a site plan approval. Some of those things are not enforceable under a development permit approval. I think the only thing that we possibly could do is the dumpster enclosure.
So would the applicant be able to voluntarily proffer those conditions of approval?
You can proffer it in a separate agreement. The, the point that I'm making is that the city should not be, or cannot be in the position of enforcing those conditions. For example, you're saying to shut down the operation if they violate, but that's, that's not a part of a site plan approval process.
Okay, I mean, as to the last point, I understand, but everything else could. I mean, which is, you know, that's the first condition that Courtney read, that it could not be, you know, changed through a change of use or an administrative site plan adjustment. So there's no contingency there, it's just a voluntary proffer. If Courtney reads it into the record, I believe that could be incorporated into the approval. I mean, it's been done before.
I would have to disagree with regards to those types of conditions being done before. The applicant can proffer whatever they desire to proffer. But what I'm saying to you is that the city would not be in a position to enforce these conditions. And I just wanted to make that clear. For your client's benefit, you probably would have to enact some other agreement with the applicant to ensure the enforcement. But the city cannot be a party to that enforcement.
Right, but the applicants can still voluntarily proffer as additional conditions of approval. But it's all right, and we don't, we don't need to get into a back and forth here. We also want a separate agreement, but for sure, they can voluntarily proffer. And I think Courtney is going to do that well.
Thank you.
Okay.
I had a question.
Okay.
Do you have a question too?
You can go first.
Okay, well, yeah, I, I'm just glad you commented on that agreement because I had a couple of questions about some of the, solely in terms of what's either going to be called the, what you're calling the amenity, but it's either going to be the clubhouse or the, or the previously called the restaurant.
Yes, exactly.
So some of the things you read off, it's a clubhouse. Are you saying there can't be any music and there can't be any catering? And I'm a little, I was a little confused.
Right, I mean, we could just do it that, you know, it's below, the music cannot emanate above the, you know, allowable DBA or DBC in the city code, something along those lines.
Okay, because that's the noise ordinance anyways, I think, so, okay. So, all right, but I mean, some of those things would apply, I can see to a restaurant, but there are other things that a clubhouse, I would think, would routinely do. I, I guess Mr. Spence has already covered what we can't do anyways, but I just wanted to mention that. Sorry, Jay, go ahead.
Okay.
Assistant City Attorney Spence. Is there some type of condition that we could incorporate in approval that would preclude them from operating or opening a restaurant without going through the full DRC site plan level four process? Or?
Use of the property is a entitlement that's given via the zoning regulation, underlying zoning regulation. There's nothing that we can do that, once they have, short of a rezoning of the property, that to remove an entitlement that they have in a property. Counsel is correct that they can proffer. The applicant can proffer to put certain restrictions in place. What I wanted to make clear with the board is that the city is not in a position to enforce those proffers. Those are a private agreement between the applicants, even though they're making it on the record here. The city can't go and shut down a use that is permitted under the code.
I, I realize that with being allowed to cook food and have music. But I, I'm not seeing any requests for retail approval on, on the, on this request. So it's not like they could go and do a lease with a company and run like some type of restaurant establishment with the approval that they're seeking currently.
What, what I'm saying is that you're approving what's before you tonight, but there's nothing that bars them in the future from amending their site plan. And the city's saying, because this prior approval said as a condition that they could not have that, but their zoning says that they could, we, we can't tie the hands of future boards from allowing them to amend their site plan to allow these. So that private agreement, they, that they say they're going to proffer, they can do that, but the city can't enforce that. And that's, that's, that's the pause and that's the caution that I wanted to provide is the city cannot be in the middle of, of using its police power in this way.
Right, okay, so what would be the process if in the future they decided they wanted to use, add retail to project? They would have to go through DRC Planning and Zoning, would have to go through all of those channels?
It depends on the types of operation. If it's just a change of use, I guess staff can speak to that, a level four approval is what I'm hearing from. So that, that would be city commission approval.
Okay, so it would have to basically be site plan level?
Level four.
Level four, okay.
Hey, any other comments or questions from the board? I have one question for staff. Jim? On these conditions of approval that you've added to the report, number five, give me the mechanics of how that works.
That's a very good question. This is Tricia Logan, who's our historic preservation planner, deals with this as well. So let me see if Ella Parker might know the answer to the question. If they find anything, your, your, your specific question is what happens if they find remains?
Yeah, I mean, is this, I mean, is there, is there reason to believe that's a possibility on that site?
No, I mean, what was done was the archaeological review.
We don't usually necessarily see that unless there's something in the history of the property that would make you think it's possible. And if that's the case, what are the mechanics of doing that?
Chair, if I could clarify, this is a standard comment for certain sites that are located in archaeologically significant areas. So when we have sites located in those areas, there are certain, there are certain requirements that require these conditions. So this is a standard condition because of that site location in that area, in that zone.
Yeah.
Okay, so basically then, we're, we're dependent on the developer, builder?
It's because it's on the barrier island that.
Call 911?
Because it's on the barrier island. This was also a condition, I think, tied to behemoth and the city's properties when we did the improvements with the CRA. They were similar language because it's on the barrier island. I don't think anything has ever been found as of my understanding now, but that's what the comment is to cover, that the applicant.
I remember the PMR parking lot across PMR.
Yep. Yep.
I just wondered.
Yeah, this would be.
How the city really handles this.
This would be subject to the same, I've heard at that property. So they would stop construction and follow the regulations regarding the archaeological find, I guess.
If I may, Madam Chair, I've also seen on the beach in certain locations where I assume Tricia has a heightened sense of scrutiny. She's actually asked for a survey to be done, archaeological survey to be done beforehand. She hasn't here, but that's not atypical either.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone in the chamber that would like to speak on this issue?
I mean.
Maybe I'll close the public hearing?
Okay, I mean, my thoughts are that, you know, our biggest gripe whenever a property is being rezoned. being rezoned is that we don't get to see the site plan. So I, I think, you know, the fact that we're seeing the site plan with this, I realize it's not called a rezone, but effective rezoning is, you know, a benefit that we don't usually have in this chamber. So I'm not really concerned with that. I know that that was expressed as a concern. I think the fact that this is, you know, it would be a site plan level four for them to be able to operate a restaurant out of this space is sufficient protection for the surrounding neighbors who are concerned about that process. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve the, the application with staff's conditions to approval, based on the findings that this complies with the ULDR.
Just, just to clarify, the board is making a recommendation of approval to the city commission.
I adopt. I adopt that.
You second that, Mike? Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't objection, objecting to rezoning. I was, what I was questioning, and I think this is something for us on another conversation, was a request for an application of prior zoning regulations on something that's been, was changed 20 years ago. And, but I think as far as the project itself, it's a beautiful project. My one outstanding concern is that we don't have a way in from Central Beach Alliance or any of this, really any of the surrounding buildings or Sunrise Intercoastal. So that's a concern to me. I don't know, Courtney, if you, if there's a way to address that, if you can do something before the city commission meeting, or if you can, I, I don't know, I'm just uncomfortable. It's the middle of the summer, one thing. I know that people on the beach and, and other parts of the city have asked not to do major projects in the middle of the summer when they're not available, and we don't have a CBA meet, there's, there's not a board member here, and there was not a meeting to vote on it. So those two things make me uncomfortable. And if you could just kind of.
Certainly. As I mentioned, the Central Beach Alliance, when they saw there were immediate neighbor concerns, postponed its vote. I have been in email communication with their board officers and actually tracked down somebody in New Hampshire today, Jim Novak or Massachusetts, to, they weren't, you know, responding back, so that everybody understand, understood, and they had received the emails. They're scheduling the membership meeting, but understood that the, and encouraged us to continue to communicate with Bay Shore Tower and Bay Shore Embassy. I believe Karen Turner with Bay Shore Embassy is here. As I shared with you, that dialogue has been ongoing. I didn't demand they vote. And with respect to Sunrise Intercoastal, it wasn't clear to me that they were going to vote. It was a full membership meeting. We did, I believe, you know, provide the information and address what was articulated, and I called Jim Kinkanen, as I mentioned. I, I am happy to ask if they would like to formally weigh in before city commission. Jim is not shy. If, if his, if his residents would like to, I'm happy to. But we have kept open communication with all of our neighbors.
Mary, when you look at the number of people they've met with in the, and not one person is here, it's shocking.
Chair, if I could also, I just got.
Not everybody in that area went for the way for the summer.
Sorry about that. I just got word that Bay Shore Embassy does have representation here tonight. I know the public hearing's closed, but they wanted just to make sure that that's represented.
And they, they chose not to speak.
Right. Okay. The one thing that, that I think is really peculiar about this, and this is more directed to staff, I don't understand how someone can come in and apply for regulations that were changed back in the year 2000, when they didn't even own the property. I mean, the project's great, don't get me wrong, but I guess what concerns me is that in the future, anybody that's on the beach that wants to get something approved, they can do the same thing. The new regulations aren't meaningless, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Help me.
So there are criteria as part of that request that the applicants would have to, you know, apply under and meet for the board to consider and for the commission to approve it. But if, if that's something that the board wants to discuss separately and communicate as, as a something to the city commission, by all means, you're welcome to do that.
But don't you think we either?
It's an existing section in the code that everyone has the right to apply under, and there's criteria that you have to show that you meet, but.
But, so I guess my feeling is if we're not enforcing or whatever, what, with the code that we changed to, then, then we need to change back. Otherwise, everybody's going to be coming forward and say.
Well, I have a follow-up question on that, Ella. So let's say that rule didn't exist. Since what they're requesting obviously has to be compliant with the comprehensive plan, wouldn't that, if somebody wanted to build a project like this, wouldn't that, and, you know, they wouldn't be precluded from then applying for a rezoning to some others, to that prior zoning, right? And then the planning and zoning board would be reviewing a rezoning application with no say whatsoever, actual site plan?
Rezonings are too specific, so that's not necessarily the case. I think with this particular section, it's an application of a prior zoning regulation. I think it's fair to revisit that section. I mean, we are, we do have, you know, on the same agenda tonight, revisions to the Central Beach area in, in terms of design standards. Again, that could be all part of the discussion that the board might want to have, and, and something that perhaps is communicated forth as a recommendation to the city commission. But today, that section exists in the code with specific criteria.
So that's what I'm trying to understand, is if that provision didn't exist, could they not just request a rezoning to, to whatever they want it to end up in anyway?
I mean, there's, you know, not every specific dimensional standard that you can anticipate is recognized in all those different zoning categories. There are, there are different, you know, levels of development you could request. For example, there's the planned development district. That's, that's something that there's, you know, there's other criteria that you'd have to meet, but.
So that prior zoning doesn't exist as a zoning, okay?
It's not a, it's not a zoning category, right?
Okay, Mary?
Yeah, I just thought about this, Courtney. How many trips remain, or maybe Jim Hetzel can answer this, how many trips remain when you build this project?
123.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we are ready to call the vote, Bridget.
I had my hand up.
I'm sorry, John. This machine's not working, so.
No, I don't have a button down, so I have to raise my.
You're in the low section, what can I?
Yeah. So, you know, looking at the criteria for the past zoning, they check all the boxes they're asking on the length of the structure. I look at it as a positive for all the reasons that the applicant brought up. I think if we had two separate buildings, it would be a much worse problem. We'd be looking at right now. I like the look of it, the connectivity, the sharing of a lot of the utilities, you know, for all those reasons, I think we have superior building. I think the intent of the code is definitely met. I just want to give kudos to George Garcia. I think, whole building, done a very good job, and I know architects don't hear that enough. So, good job, buddy. You know, and I think it's a shame that we're even talking about this restaurant, and I realize developers are put under a lot of pressure. And there are regulations out there. I almost wish we still had a restaurant part of the application, because there are some really unique things about the beach. We know all the little restaurants. You know, if you're a local, you know where to go. And I just see a place like that, not on the strip, but back off the, the main strip, on the waterway, you know, similar to the pillars or the wine garden. My wife and I really enjoy those places. And if I lived in that building or the adjacent, I think it's a positive. We always forget that having those local places and having mixed use actually add an enhanced neighborhood. You don't have people driving in necessarily. You're walking there. And it alleviates traffic, and everybody always kind of interprets it the wrong thing. And, and it also creates that sense of place for the beach and good quality place. I think this is a good quality development, and, and I do think it's a shame that the applicant took that off the application, because I would definitely have proved it with. But there is still that, that net that will, you know, catch it later, and it may come back for us in the future, but, you know, they'll still have to go through the process. And if I'm still on the board, I would probably approve a restaurant, such a beautiful building. So I just wanted that to be heard.
I just want to say that I agree with everything that you said, John. Okay, are we ready to call the question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Gannon?
Approve.
Mr. Wayman?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney? Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Chair Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. That is approved unanimously.
Thank you very much. If I may, Madam Chair and Board, for five, 10 seconds before you move. I, I had indicated to Jeremy Shear that I would respond to his proffer. I realize the hearing is over, but with regard to a lot of the activity he was talking about regarding Uber and all, and those sorts of things, we do agree those are inconsistent with a club room. Those are restaurant uses. Would note that certainly building guests are going to be there. We would obviously agree to comply with the noise ordinance, and there may be an employee in there cleaning. But I did want to respond to Mr. Shear. Heard a lot of what he said. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Okay.
I, I just have to say thank you. Thank you for the kind comments about everything and, and the approval. We appreciate it. Right, thanks.
Beautiful project. Okay, next up is case number 221007.
Good evening, Jim Hetzel, Principal Urban Planner, presenting tonight on the proposed Central Beach rewrite text amendment that's before you. I just want to indicate a couple things. One, there is a team here of staff to help myself during the actual presentation. We have Carlin Grant, who's been the project manager on the phone as well, and obviously Ella Parker, our urban design planning manager. So there's a team here to kind of answer any questions you have, but I'm going to give the overall presentation. Carlin and Ella could jump in at any point if I miss something or they want to clarify. So we'll get started. And also, just want to start off by also saying that this has been a long process. I started with the city ten years ago, and one of the very first meetings I went to was at the Hilton Hotel for the beach. I know many of you probably remember that. Been a long time in the making, because I've been with the city for seven years. So here we are today. We're going to run through a presentation that kind of gives an overview of the proposed text amendments, and then we can get into any specifics about the proposed language. Carlin and Ella can help address this. So the summary on this proposed text amendment, this is just big picture, you know, the, the categories that we looked at were definitions, clarifying anything that we need to in the definitions, proposed uses, the table that outlines what's permitted, and, and the dimensional standards also. The design compatibility, you might recall that, that's a point system that was in the code. We kept the point system, but took a different approach in providing clarity on what you can get. The other one was very subjective, or the existing language is very subjective. Open space requirements were drafted and created, also a public realm and pedestrian mode, and providing some clarity on that, and the process for approval. This is out, public outreach in the recent past two years or so. You'd see who the staff has met with, had open houses, Central Beach Alliance as well. So it's just kind of a, a list that, public outreach that we've done. You can see that we came to you guys in March. We did a presentation, a preliminary presentation back in March of this year to the board. So one of the things we did, we thought we needed to do, this was basically more of a cleanup effort, was the uses table. The way the Central Beach District was written, it was very, not reflective of our current or other sections of code. So you can see on the left what the existing language looked like, with the big X through it, and on the right is getting it consistent in the table format that we have in other sections. So the point system, the existing point system, this is how it reads today, as I mentioned, is very subjective on what it really should result in to get the points. And staff has always struggled with this section of code and kind of getting to a place where there's understandable elements that an applicant should do, and also for the public to understand what's going to be done. What we did was we took a rewrite to it. Basically cleaned it up, provided clarity, and categorized it slightly differently, so you understood, or the applicant understood and the public understood what the points were achieving. So you can see the very first one on the left is lining the parking facility above the first floor with habitable space. Very clear. There's no, there's no subjectiveness to that. That's two points if you do that. So we provided clarity, and you can see the other bullets there, same approach, better understanding both for predictability, both for the developer and the public. Open space requirement. So recently, you might be aware, the board was aware, we did downtown amendment, modification of downtown master plan, also included open space. Exact same approach, where it's based on for residential uses, the number of units and a square footage, basically a formula to get to the open space area. Non-residential has a percentage that needs to be done. And if it's mixed use, there's a requirement that you use the higher of the two. Very similar approach that we did for downtown. Another aspect are the streetscape standards we created. So basically, this was to deal with the people's streets, which is in the next slide, and talk about the safety and activity of the public. So there's minimum requirements for sidewalks. This is pretty much across the board for all of Central Beach. You can see the standards there, required street trees and so forth. So we cleaned this section up as well. And it took a different approach. The way the code reads now is people's streets, and where if you front a people's street, there are requirements you have to do. Similar to other approaches throughout the city and master plans, we looked at a primary and a secondary street, and what would be required whether you front either or. And focus obviously on the public realm, the pedestrian improvements, and the activity that occurs on the beach. The, the dimensional standards, it's hard to read a little bit, but you can see the yellow bar on the bottom, are the setbacks. That particular of the existing code changed. The top elements, like for instance, building height, we did not propose any changes to building height. But we're going to run into some of the setbacks. So I just, you know, this, the slide basically says of what exists today, which is what you see in front of you, the yellow is the area of the setbacks that changed, which is going to go into the next slide. But based on the zoning district, there is a front setback, side setback, the rear setbacks are much more clear than what it would be today, which talks about the side and half the height, the rear. It's very cumbersome to apply this section of code. We cleaned it up to be very, very more specific on what the setback distance is based on it being a front, side, or rear. What we added to the dimensional requirements were reform-based element, which did not really exist today. It was more specific, more detailed, and again, based on the zoning district, very clear and predictability both for a developer and the public of what should be done based on the zoning district the property is located in. So we added floor area ratio for the IOA district and NBRAs, because there was no floor area limitation in the code today. And then we have shoulder heights for the podium, tower setback and separations. There's floor plate sizes all listed there that you can see. So some visual, and then talk about the tower, step back, and the intent, obviously similar to our other master plans, just like everything in those plans, it's to encourage more of light and air to get through to the ground level, public realm. It addresses and deals with the form of the building. With the beach, it was always very under a site plan level four, and also the requirements, the way they were, it really was very difficult to apply them. So there was an understanding for everybody across the board. This establishes pretty much a standard on the Central Beach and all the zoning districts. Tower separation, I believe, again, downtown, that should sound familiar, about having a minimum distance. We took the same approach of having that 60 feet between towers, either on the same property or adjacent. on the same property or adjacent properties, that same thing that we did for downtown. And these are such as visuals, so how some of the dimensional standards would apply based on the zoning district. So this is the ABA zoning. It gives you some graphic illustrations of how would it look if you applied it on a property. Those dimensional standards that I just showed a couple of slides prior. So for instance, a tower separation is 60 feet. You can see 30 and 30 if it's probably adjacent lots. You have, um, the floor plate size limitation. Also what this does and what you see on the top right hand corner of this slide is allows applicants to get flexible with the massing of the building by, while still meeting the, the dimensional standards. So we, you know, we encourage that. So it comes up with more creative design, but it provides for that flexibility as well. And then obviously some images on the bottom right. Again, showing some detailed graphic of how you apply the dimensional standards on the zoning district, maximum floor plate size, tower separation, uh, the setback distance and so forth. So these are just some visuals we thought would be helpful to have in the presentation. PRD, same thing, another graphic that shows how the floor plates, the setbacks, tower separation would apply for projects. And the podium height. So the development permit and approval process and procedures, what we are proposing are some slight differences to way the code reads today to what we're proposing. For instance, the site plan level two would apply if a applicant meets all the dimensional requirements, but it would be also subject to commission call up. So it, as well as public participation prior to the call up. So that's a little different than we do in other parts of the city. Basically, if you meet all the requirements, you can go as a site plan level two, which is DRC approval, subject to commission call up and public participation. The other aspect is a site plan level four, which goes through the planning and zoning board and also the commission for any projects seeking modifications. That would also have public participation requirements. So the slight difference of what we have now for the approval process versus what we're proposing to occur with this text. And with that, questions?
I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead, John.
That I saw on the dimensional, and it's funny that we're talking about building length. I saw it. But but yes, on page two of six on the staff report, maximum building, street wall length, width, there's a note B.
I'm sorry, you said what page?
Staff report on the second page.
On the second.
Midway down, maximum building, street wall length, width.
Yeah.
For the PRD and the ABA, it says 200 feet, says O B.
In the, in the exhibit, that's the proposed text language. I think maybe it was just missed in the staff report because she was providing the table, but if you go to the actual text amendment, there is a note at the bottom of that table. I'll find it.
Hi, this is Carleen, if I may. That would be on the exhibit, that will be on page 17 of exhibit two.
Found it.
Page 18.
Interesting. Yeah. And I just wanted to read that note. So thank you. Um, that would have cleared it up a lot. Well, third cases, I guess. So, and, um, Jim, could you tell me, are there any other examples? I saw the limitation of the FAR to four. Can you give me an idea of what some of the other well-known buildings are, FARs, FAR?
That's a really good question. I don't know off the top of my head.
Just want to see what that compares.
I could probably reference a recent project that was approved was the PDD for the Alhambra site. They were at a FAR, I want to say a 4.5, if you recall that design. Um, I'm trying, I don't know about existing built projects. I don't know if Carleen knows that, that some of the research of Carleen knows. Answered that at all. We can find out and get back to you if you'd like.
I, I'd like to know that because if we're limiting it to four, there's obviously a reason. Why not five? Do we have fives out there or sixes? I'm not sure, but.
Yeah. So the way the, the beach zoning districts are today, um, that have a FAR or what we're, I guess I should say what we're proposing, yeah, is the PRD would be the highest at six and that's the planned resort kind of district. Um, the other next highest would be the South Beach Marina District, which is where Bikini Mar is. That's a five. So the intensity goes down, but obviously as you go into the other zoning districts, the two highest are those two beach zoning districts. And there's intent and reason behind that is because one's a planned resort and the other one's the South Beach Marina. The other ones are more residential as you get into like the NBRA and so forth.
Think as this moves forward, they want to just have that as backup just so we.
So, hi, I'm sorry. This is Carleen, if I may. Uh, as part of, uh, putting these together, we did take a look at some of the projects that came in through the pa, in the past, um, projects such as AC Marriott, that actually FAR came in at 3.97. Um, Orton, um, came in at about 2.16. Adagio was at 4.3. So looking at all those projects and, uh, most of those projects are in the NBRA, um, and IOA zoning districts, we felt that the maximum FAR of four would be appropriate for the context of those name, of those zoning districts.
And I, I have on the screen too, just for clarity, as you could see the existing code today as it reads, does not have any F, maximum FAR for the IOA district or for the NBRA. So as the code is today, there's no specific limitation on the FAR.
And I'm glad that Carleen just answered that question because at least there's some context and it makes sense now. Like, okay, four makes sense. So thank you, Carleen.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Can I make a comment? I'm sure. Were you saying something? Sorry. Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
It amazes me that something came out of a workshop in 2018 that has what I would consider a piece of my magnet, generates zero turnout on either side. I mean, I can't even imagine how much time you guys have put into something that there's nobody here to fight for it or fight against. Are you here? Oh, I take that back. I'll wait until Ms. Chalkus is done. You may sway my vote.
I, I know I've participated in several of the meetings we had with the Central Beach Alliance. I think we had it at the, um, the B Hotel and the room was full, full of residents and, and Carleen did an excellent job presenting what you see before you today. And we had taken questions and feedback and addressed it, you know. So I think it is a lot to go towards staff's outreach efforts related to this, that you don't see as many people here because of one, because of the outreach we did and two, over the time we've took to do the outreach over several years.
Yeah, are there any other?
Crack my comment.
I have my light on if you.
Yeah. And just like any effort that we do in planning, you know, to build consensus where you have everybody at a hundred percent on the same page is really hard. Always have, you know, conflicting, conflict, um, you know, opinions and what recommendations are. We got to the best consensus that we could, but I think you'll hear tonight from several people that there's some more efforts that maybe should be done or Ms. Chalkus will all probably.
I just, you know, just being involved in the downtown master plan and, and all the gyrations. I mean, there were people on both sides. They the beach is a sensitive area of all. That literally here freaked me out. Anyway, I would like to talk. Very enlightened.
Hey, Mary, did you want to say something or can we?
We can wait. I, I have questions for Jim, so.
Did you want me to stay here or? Chair, did you want me to stay or do you want to?
Mary, ask your question and then we'll hear.
Well, I, I can assure you that, and I, I see a couple of people that I know were at these meetings, that the meetings, Mike, were very, um, very, um, there was a lot of conversation. Early on, there was some concern about the setbacks. And so I guess I want to ask you that question. When you took this final thing with a zero foot setback on the side and rear yards and, uh, what was the reaction? Do we have an okay? Is this, was this something Central Beach Alliance pretty much signed off on? I didn't go to any of these last meetings, but some of the first ones, that was one of the hottest topics was setback.
Yeah, and I'll probably ask Carleen. I know the SLA because of the context of the area and the buildings that are there and the parcels are very, very small. You know, the zero setback is, you know, applicable because of that. I, I don't know if Carleen wants to add any more to that of how the PRD and the SLA has a zero side back.
Uh, yes. Basically what Jim said, um, speak in terms of the context of the SLA zoning districts, those parcels are very linear or very small. And so that's why the zoning, I'm sorry, the setbacks for, the side setbacks for those, for that particular zoning district is at zero. Um, and same thing with the PRD, the, our PRD, I would consider to be one of our most intense zoning district along the Central Beach, here, um, uh, in, along the barrier island. And so the existing code does allow for a zero setback for that. And so that was something that we figured we would keep.
Okay. And, and Carleen, when you went to the last meeting of, with the Central Beach Alliance, was there a lot of, uh, was there, was pretty much everybody in consensus on that?
Yes, there was consensus. I actually also reached out to the president, um, of CBA Bill just to see if he would like for us to come again, um, and, and present with the latest, seeing that we were coming forward to planning and zoning board this month. And he felt that seeing that everything is pretty much the same from what we presented to them, that we did not have to, uh, have a special meeting because they don't have meetings during the summertime. But he, they were all in support of, um, the overall effort and what we are proposing.
Okay. And then just the last thing I wanted to ask about Jim was the tower separation. I, I know you said you made it the same as the downtown, but to me, the beach is a very different area than the downtown. So again, did this pretty much have the consensus of the, um, of the Central Beach Alliance and the other residents?
Yeah.
Tower separation of six, of 60 feet.
Yeah. I mean, I'll do a first response to that and then I'll let Carleen clarify, but like the 60 foot distances, you know, the reason why it's the same as downtown is because that analysis was done, um, by consultants about tower separation period, you know, that just the separation requirement. To do another analysis, we thought it wasn't necessary, because it already is established in the city that that 60 feet, you know, separation between the towers. We did not have the resources to go do additional analysis of wind and everything on the beach to look at a separation greater. So that's one part of the answer. The other part I would ask Carleen to talk about the, um, consensus of.
Yes, that was also something that, uh, everyone seemed to take positive because of, um, it was a more form-based approach and it would still provide more air and light, uh, between the towers and the buildings as a whole.
Okay. And I know I said that was the last question, but I have one more. What? Nothing has changed as I, in this about the trips, the beach trips?
Nothing has changed with the beach trips. The beach trips are tied to the regional activities.
Are you done, Mary? Okay, done for now. Okay. Um, anyone in the public would like to speak?
Good evening, Nectaria Chalkus with the firm Lockery and Chalkus. Um, I would be remiss if I did not, um, thank staff for listening to, um, our comments. I know that they've done, um, or they've gone as far as they're willing to go. And so I understand that we're going to be coming here and speaking to you all and expressing our concerns. Um, again, uh, Milan Houston zoning lawyer, as you all know, um, we represent a number of property owners and have, uh, worked on a number of the projects on the Central Beach. And, and so I can appreciate that doing anything on the beach, um, especially, um, amending the code is certainly difficult to do. It's not for the faint of heart. Uh, but we do want to express some concerns about several aspects of the Central Beach code amendment. Um, the first is that there is no current grandfathering provision. So you have existing development approvals, existing site plans that have been approved within the Central Beach and there is no ability for them to, at least, we would like it clarified in this ordinance, that those projects can continue to be modified. Um, and if they're built, um, be rebuilt or, or there's some catastrophe, they can be rebuilt under that code, um, the old code. Um, so that is something that I think needs to be worked into the code. I think staff is amenable to that. That is something that exists in the downtown RAC code. So I think it would be very easy to take that language, cut and paste it into the new CBA code. Um, the building length, the, there is currently an across-the-board building length and width requirement on, in the chart of 200 feet. And the way the code is currently drafted, it says that parking garages are included within that building length and width requirement. So I, I think during Courtney's item, I think you heard that some of the unintended consequences of having a building length requirement like that with parking garages is that you may force developers to place multiple parking garages. And that even assumes that they can even fit on the site. Um, you may get into a situation where you have multiple parking garages on a site and then you now have a site that has a, a higher parking garage than would otherwise be required if that parking garage was able to extend beyond the 200-foot building length limitation. The other thing that the code has in it presently is it allows you to modify that building length, but it only allows you to do it in a couple of districts. It allows you to do it in the PRD and allows you to do it in the ABA. But I think you heard Carleen mention that the Sunrise Lane District has very long and linear and very thin parcels, particularly for example, on Sunrise Boulevard, you had that Franco and Vinnie's. Those are very long and linear properties. They don't have a lot of depth. And so the only way to really effectively and, um, put a parking garage on that site, building in fact, is to have more building length work with. And the way the code is drafted, there's no ability for a property owner in the SLA to request relief from that 200-foot building limit, limitation. It's only allowed to be modified in the PRD and the ABA. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out is that if you have a subterranean parking garage, so I think, um, there are some developments that prefer to put parking garage under the ground. Um, we wanted to make sure that that building length limitation does not apply to something that is subterranean. Um, I think the staff would interpret it to be that way, but I just want to make sure that it's clear. Right now, the language in this code amendment says parking garages are included within the The other things that are brand new to this code, brand new, they have never appeared in the, are the step back requirements for towers, tower component. So you have your podium and then you have your tower that occurs above 65 feet. Required under this code, step it back. This is in every zoning district, 12, 15 feet on all sides of that property. Again, when you're talking about some of these properties that have very small or small depth or are very long and linear, that can be very difficult to accomplish without having what we call these bar buildings. They're very long and they're extremely skinny. And so right now, the way the code is drafted, you have a requirement, 12 feet, 12, 12 feet to 15 feet, depending on your zoning district, to step the tower back. Um, that's required on all sides. There's no ability to request relief from that. So, um, the other thing that I wanted to, and this is probably one of the biggest things that you'll hear, floor plate. There is no floor plate minimum right now. We currently see some FAR. Uh, but this floor plate maximum that being adopted, proposed code, um, is a significant result to down zoning some. Right now, as it's drafted, it says that you have 10,000 square foot limitation on residential and that includes across the board, all zoning districts, 10,000 square foot maximum floor plate above 65 feet for all residents, matter where you are in the matter what size property you above 65 feet for all residential, no matter where you are in the, no matter what size property you. There's no ability to request relief from that. So it's, it obviously takes a parcel that maybe is a smaller parcel, or maybe it's even a bigger, can't fit two towers, because they now have separation requirements, tower separation requirements, not only from towers on the same site, also from towers that are on neighboring property. So that is a significant modification and imposition on property code amendment. I think the best way to illustrate that is to sort of give you an idea of some existing projects that are on the beach and what their floor plates are, how that would, would impact some, like, you've heard Adagio brought up, I think that was the FAR example Carlann brought up. Adagio is in the intercoastal overlook area, and that project, 10 stories, and has a floor plate of 17,000. Under this code, the floor plate requirement for that would be. And I think when people look at that building, I think they see a very beautiful building, but that building would never be able to be protected. The Paramount, I think a lot of folks are very familiar with. The Paramount is a 17-story building. It is 90% residential, so all of the floors are residential except for the bottom. And that is a 17,750. Currently, it's drafted, it would be limited. So that's a significant change and impact. I have one more example, it's probably the, one of the ones that are everyone's most familiar with. That is Four Seasons going up. Very excited about. The Four Seasons is 22 stories, and the floor plates of that building are 19,500. And then, as you go up higher, because of the beach shadow restrictions and such, the floor plates do get smaller, but the smallest floor plate, and that's the 22nd level, 12,300. That would not. And that's at the top of. And you're at floors five through 11, you're at 19,000. At otherwise. So this is, this is a significant impact to floor plates, and there's no ability through the code, under this code, as it's drafted, to request relief from those. Recognize that certain parcels on the beach, not a one-size-fits-all. We have to, in downtown, you're allowed to request relief, go to the city commission. You're allowed to request relief from floor plate requirements, step-back requirements, from a lot of the design requirements, in recognition of the fact that there are, not every project is going to be the same, not every project is going to be the same. And so taking, you know, the code and not allowing some flexibility is certain, some very impactful. And then, lastly, the open space requirements. They're currently, the way it's drafted, there's two ways to calculate.
Go ahead, please finish.
So there's two ways to calculate the open space. One is if you just have a residential project, the other is if you have non-residential. And if you have a mixed-use, you have to be a horizontal mixed-use project. Hotel, non-residential. Usually, I don't need a mic, people tell me. Today, I do. So, right now, as it's drafted, the most stringent requirement, or the greater requirement, would apply. So you have a situation where, like for the instance, the Paramount Hotel, I'm sorry, the Paramount Residences, that project is almost all residential, but because it added one floor commercial, one restaurant, really, not even one floor, it's one bay of, of commercial, the entire building, it would then be subject to the non-residential open space requirements, which are actually, in most cases, numbers that I've run, are almost always going to be more stringent. And then there is one more thing, and then I will, I will stop. And that is, in the development approval chart, page 38 and 39 of the backup, I really think it's great that there's going to be some certainty in the process, and there's going to be a streamlining of the process. But there is one line item where it says that if you're proposing residential, even if it seems, it seems, even if it meets all of the code requirements, would still have to come in front of the Planning and Zoning Board. Whereas if you're a hotel, or if you're something else that meets all the code requirements, then, then you can just get approved at DRC. And so I think we may want to take a look and see if we can put residential into the same category as hotel, which is that if it meets the code requirements, it meets everything, then just go ahead and allow that project to go through the shorter process, which is DRC, and then 30-day call-up. And happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Did, did you go through all this with staff?
Yes.
Okay, so. Jim, I have, I mean, I have a problem with the floor plate. I also have a problem with the lack of relief.
So I just.
So please explain to me why those two things.
So just for clarity, we have, that we have not been speaking with Ms. Chalkis and Ms. Crush, we have not formally received anything in written form, to follow everything that Nektoria just said. But I mean, we're glad to, you know, continue to work with them and get the specifics. There's some things that were said that staff agrees with, as far as process of approval or asking for deviations to be a site plan level four, include some other elements in those, at those requests. I think we can get to that place. For instance, increasing your floor plate size could be something that could be going to the commission as a site plan level four, if it can be demonstrated as such.
Do you think this needs some more work before you take it to the next step with the city commission? Because that's kind of the impression I'm getting.
You're asking me that?
Yeah.
I mean, as we always do, I look and jump in. I mean, we're willing to work with applicants or public.
It sounds like there's just a number of issues that need to be fixed, clarified, modified, whatever.
Chair, I think we're comfortable addressing a lot of what Ms. Chalkis brought up, and I know Ms. Crush also wants to speak, so perhaps we can listen to hers as well. But I think, you know, some of the main things that I jotted down that we talked about, for example, adding the grandfathering provision, I think that's a fair request. We've also added that to the downtown. It's for existing buildings as opposed to, it's different than, for example, the provision we discussed about applying prior zoning regulation. It's simply to address existing buildings. So I think that would be probably a fair thing that we could accommodate between this hearing and the city commission. Looking at the building length exceeding, applying in PRD and ABA, I think we can look at all districts. Again, the idea was that if you meet all the regulations, you, the give-back would also be an easier process. So you could do a level-two DRC and go through an easier process. If you don't, because you might have a site such as the, the one we saw earlier tonight on the agenda, that happened to be in, in the IOA district, you know, perhaps, again, that provision of, you can exceed 200 feet if you go through this process, Planning and Zoning Board, Greater Public Outreach, and City Commission. So I think for that, as well as, I think that's kind of similar to the floor plate size as well. I think it's fair to recognize that, yes, we didn't have floor plate sizes before, but our regulations were a lot more nebulous. So when you have things like, provide a half-the-height step-back requirement, that's a very significant setback if you have 120 feet in height, right? That's about 60 feet. So I think in fairness, staff tried to balance that with more form-based regulations, introducing, introducing things like floor plate sizes, because I think that really helps us to kind of control the massing and the form of the building. So again, if you can meet all these requirements and you want that easier process, then you can do so. And if you don't, you can request for these, make requests for these things through the more, you know, a bigger public hearing process. So I think these things that were brought up, I think we can take a look at them, and if the board, you know, agreed, we could make some of these changes prior to commission.
I just don't want people to have to feel they have to go to the board of adjustment, because that's the only relief there is, so. Okay, Mary, go ahead. Because there was extensive community outreach on this, and congratulations to you and to Carlann and Jim, and to everybody who was involved in that. And you were able to bring people together to the point where we don't see, you know, the entire room filled tonight. I think before you just go to the commission and change something at that thing, it's important to make sure that you bring the community with you. I think many of, of the points that were brought up are very valid, particularly the issue of relief is one, or, you know, of having an appeal process. I think that's, those are really important points. But you've done such a great job on this of, of really bringing, it sounds to me like, you know, from all, from that first meeting where people were like at each other's throats to where you are tonight, I would just take the extra time to make sure that the things that, that they're requesting from their vantage point are things that also the community can buy into, and I think they are. I don't think that, I think most of this could be worked out, but I, I think that community component, particularly on this, is critically important. And to go back to Mike's observation in the beginning, that we don't see the whole room full, that's because of what you've put into making sure that people, you know, felt comfortable with it. So I would like to see you, you know, maybe bring it back to us before you go to the commission and do a public hearing in that. And in the interest of time, after you listen to Courtney, of course. I would like to just make a motion to defer it until September, October, and give you time to do that. And, and again, all of you who were involved, and all the staff who were involved in this process, I think you've really done a great job of bringing the community together. Okay, so we're going to hear from Courtney, but I think we need to deal with Mary's motion first. Thought you just did that. Okay. Mike, you seconded it? No. Okay, Courtney?
Madam Chair, Board, Courtney Crush, Principal with Crush Law. I'm not going to repeat everything that Nektoria said, but I agree with her and appreciate the dialogue both back from staff and the board on certain encouragements. With respect to the floor plates, if I could make an additional comment, there's, it seems to be a significant distinction between residential, which, as Nektoria said, has the 10,000-square-foot floor plate, and then hotel. It seems as if there's been a policy decision made, or that hotels should be larger than residential. And as we think about what our beach may need with the limited amount of trips that are there now, and you think of what a condominium building looks like versus a hotel, which is glass and balconies versus an office building, I don't know why that distinction was made, because what that will end up doing is the highest and best value of one's property is then going to be hotel. So we're going to end up, it seems, encouraging more hotels on the beach versus people who may want to live on the beach. That leads into another comment I would like to make with respect to density. The PRD and the NBRA, for example, and maybe the SLA have residential densities of 48 and 32 dwelling units an acre. I would like to continue to talk to staff about increasing that density. It's not a very high number, but what it ends up doing in terms of what you can build, given price points, is produces product, like you saw in the luxury site plan, you know, behind us, and Nektoria mentioned Paramount and Adagio, you know, very large, million-dollar-plus unit, which is wonderful. If the density were a little higher, perhaps 20% higher as it used to be prior to 2002, you might actually be able to have a assistant manager at the Hilton afford to buy a more reasonably-priced condominium, and that is something that I had shared with staff. The benefit of that is then those people are not taking our bridges to come home. And I know, long-term, we're going to start to evaluate, you know, traffic and trips and those sorts of things. I'll echo what Nektoria did say about the floor plates, envisioning properties like the Elbow Room Block. With 10,000-square-foot floor plates, we can kind of see it's going to look like smokestacks. I'm not sure it's the right number. Appreciate Ella and Carlann and Jim's willingness to consider having a deviation, you know, but you're still starting from a point that is small enough, that I'm not sure it's the right number to start from. Nektoria gave you examples of other A1A-fronting properties and Adagio, and the two buildings in the application we just talked about a little earlier tonight, they were 12,300 square feet each, so they would not be eligible to, to be built without a deviation. So I wonder whether it makes sense to, I know Sasaki put it into those numbers into a document in 2009, but maybe those numbers should be evaluated. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Courtney. Okay, is there anyone else that would list in, in the audience that would like to speak on this? If not, close that public hearing. Mary, go ahead.
Your turn. Oh, okay.
Well, I'm pushing.
Lights don't work.
I'm pushing mine, because I never remember, and everybody says, put your light on. Most important thing you can push, speaker on your microphone.
Well, I am speaking into my microphone, and I have it on. I'd like to move to defer this. Ella, is it okay to defer it until October for the looping, or you think that's overly? Or do we have to do a, huh? Oh, just defer it.
We, we would prefer a time certain, because then we don't have to re-advertise everything.
All right. So. I'll time certain October.
Okay.
Because it's the middle of the summer.
Chair, you seconded it? Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for everybody's input. And we are now at communication to the city commission. Is there anything the board would like to communicate? Mr. Bronco?
I definitely would like to talk to the board about something.
The board or the?
Well, to the board, and it could potentially be communication. So.
You have the floor, sir.
All right, well, as some of you may know, I am, I'm the president of the Tarpon River Civic Association. And having lived in a home in, in one of our neighborhoods, beautiful, city's beautiful neighborhoods, I've, you know, it's, it's exciting to be a part of the growth. Growing up in Weston, it was all planned and built out, so it was a real change of pace, living in Tarpon River. But one of the, one of the issues that has come up time and time again is sidewalks within the residential neighborhood. There are certain streets of ours where, you know, half of the street has sidewalks. And, and a new project, you know, our only hope for there being a full system of sidewalks on that street is as properties are redeveloped or, or built, a sidewalk would be required as, as part of that redevelopment. But unfortunately, you know, they, every single day, we're missing opportunities to improve our sidewalk system in those areas where it's desired. Let me, let me just say that it's, there may be some places where sidewalks are not appropriate, or where some neighborhoods don't want sidewalks altogether, and that's totally appreciated and, and respected. You know, so my, I'd just like to walk you through the, what the different conditions are. You only need to find one of these conditions, and you can get out of building a sidewalk on your redevelopment completely when you go through the building department. One, the city manager or his designee has not made a determination that sidewalks are desirable. Two, drainage problem exists, understandable. Three, adjacent properties have not been improved with sidewalks. So you could have a whole street, and you could be at one end of the street, and because one of your neighbors doesn't have a sidewalk, there goes that opportunity to, you know, enhance sidewalks throughout the whole street. Four, no sidewalks were constructed in the original subdivision development. Okay, so in 1895, when the city was platted, if there weren't sidewalks, I don't have to put them in now. And then, those are, and then if the adjacent right-of-way is less than 50 feet, okay, somewhat understandable. So in, in finding that some of our busiest major streets within our neighborhood, there are ongoing developments now where the developer is trying to easily use this criteria to evade, including sidewalks, on their project. We had discussions with building department, and yeah, their hands are basically strapped. There's nothing they can do. If somebody claims one of these things, they don't have to do it. And they brought to our attention, that's what they had suggested in the past and started working on, is that every neighborhood have a map of where they want sidewalks, and then that be approved by the commission and adopted as code, so that, you know, when somebody proposes. proposes a project, if it's on one of those streets, then it should have a sidewalk, less actual drainage issue or right-of-way issue. So I would just, you know, I don't know that, we don't need to vote on anything tonight, we can talk about it again next time, but, so I'm curious to hear what others think, I don't want to just throw up a motion that's stale. But I would recommend that we communicate to the commission that we should really expedite this initiative that staff has undertaken to create a comprehensive sidewalk system. The driving conditions are getting increasingly worse, and it's very, it's very unsafe walking around in some of our neighborhoods.
We, okay, the, it's a little complicated, to say the least. You know, obviously, I live in Holy Hammock, and we have streets with no, quite frankly, we don't want them. And what's strange is when I develop, building a new single home, and there's no sidewalks on the street, and other people don't want them, how do you force him to put a sidewalk in that's about fifty feet? Complicated. But anyway, we have so many sidewalks in the city-
But this would-
They're in such disrepair.
And that's a, that's the issue, because a few years ago, the cost of repairs in the budget was like six-hundred million, and it was, was just an overwhelming figure when you're looking at the overall needs of infrastructure. But I do agree with Jay, that it sounds to me like that section could be redrafted, updated.
Correct.
And so I, I think there's probably a way to address both of what, something, you know, you're both are talking different issues, but they're all in the sidewalk ordinance, so I think there's a way you could redraft it, maybe, but ultimately, once you charge someone with building it, and we're twenty years down the road, that's going to go back onto that pile of six, seven-hundred million dollars worth of sidewalk repairs, so-
So-
I think there's multiple layers.
So I, I think all of this is totally complimentary. Right, we shouldn't be building sidewalks where they're not needed, then we need to maybe repair sidewalks in the future that no one's using, or some places don't need sidewalks. And that's my, this is all my point, is every neighborhood should create a map with the Transportation Mobility Department indicating where they want sidewalk, and then-
You talking about new sidewalks, Jay, or just repair the ones, or complete the ones that are there?
Wherever there should be sidewalks within your neighborhood, and wherever there shouldn't be, there's a map that shows that, right? And your neighborhood decides that for your neighborhood, and it becomes code. So that way, when people are building new homes in our neighborhood- Correct.
And that's specifically paid for by that neighborhood? If you want, if you want sidewalks throughout your neighborhood-
No, this isn't-
That's going to be paid by your neighborhood?
No, no, it's not, it's not an initiative, it's not an initiative to get the city to go and install the sidewalks, it's just to show that if, if somebody were to rebuild a house on this street that's planned to have a system of sidewalks in the future, that they can't get out of having, though.
How long do you think it'll take a neighborhood to rebuild where you've got a hundred percent sidewalk?
Not in our lifetime.
I forget if it was you or somebody made the point, that somebody at the end of the block didn't have a sidewalk, can have, you know, it's like, a perfect example is the River Walk. The River Walk was not completed until they connected the last piece in front of the spray han. You always walk to the end, you bang your nose on the wall, and then turn around and went back. So, you know, you either come in, put it in as a part of an infrastructure, which sounds like you wanted down in your neighborhood, but somebody's got to pay for it. So your neighborhood who says, "We want them over here, we want on both sides of the road", that's great, underwrite it, and do it somehow through the neighborhood.
I wish, I wish we could do that.
To Jackie's neighborhood where they don't want them, you shouldn't have to pay for them to go in your neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, no, I wish that we could, you know, be proactive in creating sidewalk systems in, throughout the city. I mean, but, but one thing is for sure, the opportunity to reduce the impact on Jackie from a financial standpoint is that when somebody builds a project in our neighborhood and is moving into our neighborhood, that they include it as part of their redevelopment, so that eventually, as all of these properties turn, that sidewalk system is built, or if when the city decides to complete that street, it'll be less of a cost burden for them to do so, because as properties have turned, they have started to build that system.
But you've got three sidewalk supporters sitting up here on the dais, because I've served with these two women for the last three years, trying to figure out how to get lost all five sidewalks to something bigger on a street that handles thousands of people. I'm not against sidewalks.
Jim Hetzel, did you want to say something?
No worries, yeah, Jim Hetzel, Principal.
Did you come up to speak about this?
What? I'm sorry?
Did you come up to speak about this?
Yeah, because I was at the meeting with Jay, just to provide clarity, to understand, you know, what we were talking about was that section of code be amended, we need policy direction to do so. So that was one thing we said, you know, that that could be conveyed up, because for us to change the code, we have to have our directive from, you know, the commission down and so forth. It can't be staff up, it's got to come down, basically, is what I'm saying. The second was the mobility plan, or through transportation mobility in the connecting blocks, to come up with a specific plan for your neighborhood that identified what streets should get the sidewalks would help, twofold. One, if a developer comes in to develop a site, they know they're obligated to put that sidewalk in because that plan has been approved by the commission. Second, it helps for seeking funding, both from, if you want grants as a community or neighborhood, or capital improvements that would have a specific plan. So that meeting kind of gave direction, I think, to your neighborhood on some options of what needs to be done in order to effectively implement this, so it's not sidewalks on every street, but also takes into account drainage, and it's planned out accordingly through the Transportation Mobility Department. So I just wanted to add that clarity to the discussion.
And Chair, if I may, just, just to clarify a little bit further, city staff is actually working on a policy update to the sidewalk. We anticipate bringing that in front of you sometime in the fall, maybe early winter, so be on the lookout for that. But some of the very things that have been spoken about tonight, we are looking at actively, you know, adopting into a new revised sidewalk policy.
Okay. I just know that we talked, we had the same conversation when I started on the board over three years ago about the sidewalk policy soon, and I'm just, it's been three years, and it's just, it's sad to see all these new properties going up, getting away with not having to put them in, and-
Right, don't forget COVID.
All right, well, I'll talk to you guys after, see if there's any other ideas.
Okay, any, any other comments? Any more, anything else for communication?
Yeah, well, I don't think, this isn't about communication, this is a discussion. I'm one, because I don't think we're ready to communicate, and I'm not sure, I personally think, having watched communications that are going to the City Commission, if we send any communications, we need to have somebody from this board there to discuss with them what we're doing, because they're just, just coming right back to us, so, not just to us, others.
It's a circular door, right?
Yeah, so what I wanted to talk about, though, was the thing that Courtney had tonight, whether there's a way to update that, maybe put a, put a-
I don't know what you're talking-
Date on it. I'm talking about the, the, the prior rezoning, you know, it just seems like if you go fifty years and you're reverting to a prior zoning, that just, this kind of seems defeat making any zoning change.
I agree.
I, I don't know, I don't know if there were something that could be put in there as a time, you know, it's good for X number of years, whatever, and certainly, this isn't ready to communicate to anybody, because first, I'm going to talk to Courtney, but I think there has to be a way to redraft that section to ensure that it comple, it protects people, but it also doesn't circumvent the zoning, the zoning changes that we put in place. I think some kind of a time, on timeframe on it, good.
Okay. Anything else, folks? Is there anything else for the good of the city? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
To move.
Meeting adjourned.